Causing trouble?
These non-technical people that can't show off our homes.
Oh, alright. I'll state a motion to approve payroll warrant number fifteen for three hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-four cents. School warrant number one zero five two for a hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. General warrant number one zero five three for three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Downtown development warrant one zero five four for two hundred and forty-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. CDBG NB twenty-one one zero five five for twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. And the fire highway warrant one zero five seven, twelve thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have some spending requests. We have one here from treasurer for one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars for pre-stamped window envelopes and sending payments. And I'll state a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This one here is a request to the finance committee. And they already voted on it, so it's approved by the finance committee. It's for transfer from the reserve fund for nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And it's to be used for postage stamps that Sheila Buzzell purchased for the town. I'll state a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The reason those were purchased is because the postage machine we have, I guess it broke, and it didn't take the ink that the company sent with it. So that's not on our people, that's on the company that we get the postage meter from. So now we have the agreement for diesel fuel.
This was something you guys did back in like June?
Okay.
But it just never got signed because there was a question on the gas versus the diesel.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll state a motion to sign the diesel contract.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
No.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have an appointment to foreman at highway. Alright, so if you'll introduce the person that's employed by us, and we're gonna be moving up to foreman.
John Mitchell?
Okay, we just appointed him a month ago.
Yeah, three weeks or so.
Right around then.
And we need a foreman in order to, you know, in the event the superintendent's out, and somebody that can, you know, help run things in different jobs in various places, so. I'll state a motion to appoint John Mitchell as the foreman for the highway department.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I think if Randy thinks it's a good idea, and you guys have been working close together, I'm all for it.
Have you had any luck with just another general?
No.
No. Alright. Alright, um, and you have the money in your budget?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, congratulations.
Congrats.
Appreciate it.
Make sure you fill out all the appropriate paperwork.
Will do. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the employee evaluation material, I'd like to do that next time.
Okay. I asked for some feedback. If you wanted anything additional, I have nine categories in there.
Okay.
If you see anything else like that, I can add that for these over.
Alright, excellent. Alright, thank you. Alright, now, I'm sure there's people watching, and there's people here that saw the discussion on an override meeting. Now, what our initial intent was, and I was gonna put this off because Brooke's not here, but since it is already the middle of January, and budget season is upon us, there's a lot of questions that come up regarding the budget, and we've had a lot of people that have been insisting that we need to have an override vote. So one of the things we were gonna try to do was we were gonna have an open discussion up at the school, and the moderator was gonna run it. And that way there, the board of selectmen would have nothing to do with it, it'd just be town people that wanted to discuss their opinions on whether or not to have an override. Well, there's been some disagreement over whether or not to do that, or to just either not have one, or try to push it through. But, so, what I'm gonna do tonight is I'm gonna explain to people how our budget works to some degree, and the responsibility that the board of selectmen has. Alright, and our town accountant's here, so if she thinks I'm wrong, I'm sure she'll say so. If not now, tomorrow. Alright, so we have several means, several, I guess you'd call them taxes in town. You have your excise tax and your property tax, and then you have enterprise funds, which are sewer and water. And while people might call those fees, they're non-negotiable, so it's essentially a tax. Okay, so the water department and sewer department bills are essentially taxed, because if it goes by your house, you're paying for it. The transfer station is a fee. That is not a tax. You can choose to get curbside, you could choose to get a dumpster, whatever the case may be. And the board of health is in charge of that, and they're not supposed to actually make money. They can only charge enough to pay for the service. Is that correct? And just so everybody knows, the people that do work down there are not paid enough. We have a lot of people that work for the town that are not paid enough. That being said, the, over the years, people have said that the water and sewer department, being enterprise funds, are kind of autonomous, because they're enterprise funds, and they say that it doesn't affect the taxpayer. But again, it's a tax, and who's paying for those bills, the sewer and water bill? Essentially, people that own houses here, therefore, they're taxpayers. So those things do affect the taxpayer. The sewer superintendents, not superintendents, committee, commission, sewer commission, and the water commission, they're elected, but they're only in charge of running those departments. They're not in charge of wages, they're not in charge of appointments, they're not in charge of any of that, and that's according to mass general law. That falls on the board of selectmen, okay? So when we talk about people that are underpaid, some of the people that are underpaid are the clerks and admins throughout the town that do various things that keep our town running. We have a twenty million dollar, we are a twenty million dollar business, and those clerks and those admins, whoever they are, are underpaid compared to everybody else. So one of the things that I'm gonna be bringing up in the near future is we're gonna be discussing a general personnel policy for employee wages for non-union personnel. Now, when it comes to an override, the override itself, I'm gonna put some numbers on the whiteboard for everybody, so you can see the actual number, and don't have to just listen to me. So the average individual income in North Brookfield is thirty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Okay, that's the average income in North Brookfield. The average median income, or household income, is eighty-one thousand, ten dollars. We have an unemployment percentage, four point two percent. That's higher than the state average. So this is individual average, median average. We have over sixty, population over sixty years of age, it's thirty percent. Okay, we have, I believe, over sixty percent of the people on fixed incomes in town. Okay, so that's not just the people that are over sixty. And then if people don't pay their water bill, we can shut the water off. You go and you put a wrench in the ground, and you turn the water off. You can't turn sewer off. Twenty-five percent of sewer users can't afford their sewer bill, haven't paid. If we turn, if we were able to turn sewer off, and then turn it back on again, if they say they paid their bill, and turn it back on again, you're looking at a four thousand dollar turn-on fee, because we have to send somebody over to dig it up, okay? So when we talk about an override, the other thing we wanna talk about is our taxes that have gone up approximately, on average, I would say about eight hundred dollars a year. Maybe more, maybe less, depending on your property size, okay? I know people that are on fixed incomes that are making under thirty thousand dollars, that went up two hundred dollars a quarter, okay? Our sewer costs are gonna be going up, because we have an EPA mandated and DEP mandated upgrade on our sewer system. So that's the feds and the state telling us that we have to upgrade, and what's it, twenty-three million dollars, is that the number? Twenty-three million dollars for our new sewer system that we really can't afford, but the state and federal government are forcing us to do it. So that is my contribution to our override discussion, and whether or not we're gonna have one. Now, the other thing that we have, that you have to know is, an override can only be initiated by the board of selectmen. Okay, it cannot be done by town petition, by citizen petition. And so, that being said, any questions on what I've said so far? Yes?
Thank you very much for that overview, first of all. I appreciated that. I was just wondering for this, the twenty-three million upgrade, are there grants? Are there any grants available for that?
Well, we've gotten some grants.
Ten million dollars.
Ten million.
Ten million.
And then a low interest, right?
Being financed through USDA.
At a low interest rate.
Yeah, it's two point one two five.
So the ten million is off of the twen, not off, but?
Yeah, twenty-three million is what we had to borrow for interim financing.
So the ten million is above that?
The ten million is part of that, but they didn't give the grant until we were so far into the project. So this year, what you see on your tax bill is interim financing fees, which is the interest on twenty-three million. Twenty-three million.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And on that note, when we first started talking about the sewer upgrade, it was supposed to be thirteen million, I think. And then we heard we were getting a grant, we heard a few things, we didn't actually get the grant yet. And then the following year, the price went up to twenty-three million, and.
COVID happened too, so there was supply.
So, you know, there's a lot of circumstances there. So it's just, it's still, it's a ridiculous amount of money. Anybody else?
Kathy?
You had indicated that you wanted to have a meeting up at the school, just for a general discussion.
Yes.
And.
We probably won't do that now.
Okay, I understand. I heard that. But I'm just curious, what would be the reasoning for not, for not doing it?
Well, I'm not the one that didn't want it, so I can't answer that question very well. I think people were concerned that we didn't have enough information, but I think this is plenty of information. So.
Are you gonna tell us more? Is there more?
No, there's not really much more for me to say.
Okay.
But I'm just, that's why I'm asking questions. And then I'm gonna tell you what my opinion is on the whole thing.
Yeah, I have no questions too. If an override does not pass, is there a plan B? Does anybody have a plan?
So this isn't a problem, so if you've been watching or reading the papers, whatever, for the past couple of years, overrides really haven't been passing anywhere, okay? This is not a problem that is strictly North Brookfield, okay? In fact, we're better off than some towns. Alright, there's towns that have blown their whole ARPA money budget on their budget. Okay, which we're not supposed to do, okay? We weren't supposed to do that, but there are towns that did, alright? There's towns that have spent their entire savings, alright? They have no money in the bank, alright? We've been pretty good about keeping money in there the best we can. So there are towns that are in much worse shape than we are, despite what people think.
My question was, is there a plan B if an override doesn't pass?
Well, we don't have a plan A, because we haven't done an override.
It's being anticipated. There's talk of it.
Well, there's lots of talk.
Some people want it. We know some people pushing, can I use that word?
Sure you can.
Pushing for an override, and let's just suppose they convince, they convince Mever to have an override, and an override doesn't make it. What is plan B?
Okay, well, we don't have a plan B. Okay.
Would we?
Would we? We're gonna try.
Okay.
We are gonna try to have a plan B, but I would encourage everybody to call your state legislators, call your federal legislators and senators, call the governor, tell them to fix things. The state had billions of dollars in surplus last August, okay? So they can alleviate a lot of the strain, depending on what they do, alright? Now, we talk about grants, and with several billion dollars, they can help out a lot of towns, a lot. So I would encourage you, you know, because not just our state legislatures, legislators, alright? If you've got friends in other districts, get them talking, get them calling, because it's not just ours that, you know. There's a hundred and sixty state reps, I think, so, you know, ours is one vote. Right? Anybody else? Chad? Oh, actually, Harvard was handed up before yours.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, because I have been away a lot, so I'm not up on all of this, and this is the first time I've heard. So is the override, the proposed possible maybe override, is that to cover the twenty-three million, that upgrade?
No.
Or for the?
No, it would be, if, if it were to happen, it would be for the town's general budget.
Okay.
So.
It would cover lots of things that we need.
Yeah, there would be a lot of work that would have to go into it.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
You're welcome. Chad?
The millionaire stack's supposed to give us some relief with the schools, and I understand for the libraries also. How are we gonna tap the, can we tap that? What's, you know what more?
I have no idea.
We're about even.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Is there any amount that's been suggested for an override?
Do you remember?
Yes.
Would you please enlighten?
Two point four million, over three years.
Just for the school.
For one department.
What? Just for the school?
Yeah, that was the only request that I've seen.
How many years?
It was broken out over three years, like eight hundred thousand each years, so it would be about two point four.
Within three years, it'd be at two point four million. Within three years, it'd be at two point four million.
It would also be for the average homeowner that had a house valued at like, I believe, two thirty to three thirty, and additional four hundred in taxes. Four thirty-three, maybe four hundred and thirty-three.
Alright, anybody else? Brandon?
The two and a half exclusions, when do they fully hit the tax rate?
The debt exclusion?
Yes.
I believe next fiscal year. Sewer will be next fiscal year. Highway fire won't be, I think, until the following year. We'll still be doing interim next year. I don't think that project's close to done, unless Jamie can tell me otherwise.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so, as I stated earlier, the override decision is on the board of selectmen, alright? So it's up to us to put it on a warrant, it's up to us to create the article. Based on the numbers that I've showed you, our people can't afford it, okay? Our people can't afford it. So, that being said, as the chairman of the board, I won't be entertaining any discussion on an override. Okay? Any questions?
Now, what plan B?
I guess, in terms of, yeah, speaking of plan B, does the board have any sort of plan for what services then will be underfunded or de-funded?
Not at this time, budget season's early.
There will be some, obviously, right?
Well, you know, somebody did bring up the school earlier. And we have very few students in the school, four hundred and eight, I think, is that right? Around there?
Three ninety-seven.
Three hundred and ninety-seven.
Pre-K through senior.
Yeah, pre-K through twelve.
Pre-K through twelve. Now, we've talked about regionalizing, which would, you know, we've had people tell us it won't save us anything, but in theory, with the busing aspect alone, it would probably save us some money, but we got turned down by Quaybug. So based on the salary level and the budget at the school, I would recommend to the school committee to start looking at tuition and the high school kids out. Because there's really no way, we can't afford that. If you look at these numbers, and you look at what the administration up there makes for three hundred and ninety-eight kids, it's ridiculous. I know that's not gonna make me popular.
Do we know the difference between the seventh through twelfth grade numbers compared to the elementary? Because I know it's significant.
They move six up, so it's six through twelve, I believe.
I've been told seven through twelve is what would, or, go ahead, Sheila.
So according to the latest DESI enrollment information, pre-K to grade five is two hundred and forty kids, that would be elementary. And in grade six to twelve, there's a hundred and fifty-seven. How many in sixth grade? According to this, thirty-four.
So there's around a hundred and twenty-something if you take out the sixth grade.
How many in the freshman class?
According to this, there's twelve in the freshman class.
Alright, now, if I can just make a point too, I have talked to a lot of people in town, and it seems that most citizens consensus is that they don't think they can afford an override. Everybody's already being hurt by the taxes that have increased. I don't know that people can really afford anything more at this point. That's all I have to say.
Alright, before we move on, anybody have anything else? Okay. Alright, so we've got some resignations. We have one here, Mr. Petrinus, based on the recent changes you imposed on the OAC day meetings at the recent board of selectmen meeting, requiring that these meetings now be a committee meeting, which I strongly disagree with and feel it unnecessary having a full-time day job. I can no longer commit more time to this project. I express my opinion that minor changes could be implemented to the current process, which would accomplish the same outcome, but it was ignored. Due to these actions, it is with regret that I submit my resignation as chair and member of the Fire Highway Renovation Committee effective immediately. I'd like to thank the board of selectmen for the opportunity to help move this project forward. Today, I submitted a notice with the town clerk for a meeting, and we don't have to read that, that's a pass, so. I wish you luck with moving this project forward. Respectfully submitted Eric Heavey. If we go back and we look at the minutes and we watch the meeting, we didn't impose anything on the committee at that time, so. But I'll state a motion to accept Mr. Heavey's resignation.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you, Eric, for observing.
Yes, thank you, Eric.
This one here, it's Paul Benoit to the board of selectmen. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation effective immediately from the Fire Highway Building Renovation Committee. I feel with the addition of the two new members, the taxpayers are better served having Pete as a full, that's Pete Orsi, as a full member instead of an alternate, I do not feel I have anything additional to offer to this project. I thank you for allowing me to serve on the board for almost a year. Sincerely, Paul J. Benoit. I'll state a motion to accept Paul Benoit's resignation letter.
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pete's not here, is he? Does he wanna be, he wants to be full-time, right? I'll entertain a motion to make Pete Orsi a full member of the building committee.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Thank you, Pete, for stepping up and wanting to help out with the committee.
Alright, yeah, thank you, Pete, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have a letter of commitment for the townhouse. This is to Trish Suddles. Says, Dear Ms. Suddles, please accept this letter of commitment from the Town of North Brookfield in support of the Historic Preservation Planning Assistant Funding Request through the 2025 District Local Technical Assistance Program, it's D L T A. The Town of North Brookfield is committed to working with the CMRPC planners to document and preserve our historic resources. These buildings, structures and landscapes foster a sense of place and create an opportunity for people to connect with our heritage. Sadly, many of these resources are at risk of being lost due to development pressures and deferred maintenance. Documenting and protecting these resources are vital, yet there are limited consultants and funding options available for historic preservation planning. We value the preservation planning assistance that CMRPC can provide to municipalities in the region, and we ask for your support in approving the funding request for this worthwhile project. Sincerely, Jason Petryus, Chairman of North Brookfield Board of Selectmen. I'll entertain a motion to sign and send this letter to Trish Suddles.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we need a member of the Board to be a representative for EMS. That's for the Central Mass EMS Corps, so. Our first responder representative is Darren Anderson, he's the Fire Chief. So, I'll entertain a motion to appoint someone to that.
So moved.
I'll appoint someone.
Oh.
Give me a name.
Somebody on the Board, I guess I could do it.
Alright, well, I'll make the motion then. Alright, I'm in good mind, Schlegel will be the representative from North Brookfield Board of Selectmen to the Central Mass EMS Corps.
Do I second that or?
Yep.
Second?
There's no one else to do it, so. Alright, any discussion?
I just don't really know what it entitles.
I'm sure you'll be informed. Yep, you can find out quick in these things. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
And then our ambulance representative, Pete Orsi. Let's see, next we have a new library director.
No.
Yeah.
Really?
Alright, so we have a letter here. Says, Dear Mr. Petryus, the Board of Trustees is pleased to recommend to the Board of Selectmen the appointment of Leah, is that how you say that? Leah Riley as Director of the Houston Free Public Library with a start date of January 27th, 2025. Leah has lived in North Brookfield since 2010 and has a strong sense of our community. She has a solid background in program development, staff leadership and resource management. Leah has experience in local school library settings. She's eager to guide the Houston Free Public Library into the future. Leah is qualified to assume the directorship and looks forward to completing a certificate program in librarianship with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Peg Bodine, Chairperson. Alright, so, Harbor, you're here, do you wanna introduce Leah?
I'd love to. I'm Harbor Fraser-Hotter, I'm the trustee, the Board of Trustees for the library and representing the Board. We're delighted and thrilled to have Leah join us with your approval. Leah just got glowing recommendations from her references at both the junior, senior high here in North Brookfield, where she was librarian and media specialist, and also at the Ware Junior Senior High School, where again, she was, she was a librarian and media specialist. And they just loved working with her, they said she brought in a creativity, hardworking, great programs to both of the schools. So, we're just really happy to have her join us at Houston and being a North Brookfielder. She's got a lot of experience and, you know, local investment. I also just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Brianna, Brianna Lamb and Gabrielle Holmes. Brianna was the children's librarian and she's been serving as our intern director since August. And Gabrielle was the assistant librarian and she moved into the children's librarian position. So, they will be welcoming Leah and helping her make the transition into her new position. They, those two just did an incredible job under difficult circumstances, so we're so grateful to them, the Board of Trustees, and also, we're also grateful to all the volunteers. So, everybody has worked together to really make the library continue to offer the same number of hours and services during this time. So, we're really grateful to the community and to all of our, so Leah, welcome, we're so happy to have you, and I think you'll all enjoy working with Leah as well. Thank you.
Excellent. You wanna say anything?
I'm very excited about this position and the opportunity to work in this town again, and I look forward to it.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Leah Riley as the Director of the Houston Free Public Library.
So moved.
And I'll second, any discussion?
Thank you for your interest in stepping into the role.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard. Alright, and the last thing we have is.
Well, we have the four and a half position.
Oh, right, 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 right. Don't wanna forget Ethan, he came up here special. Alright, we have a change order, it's change order number two. So, the net increase of the change is $26,572.06, and this is for the Mount Pleasant Street project. And the cost increases are from removal and replacement of the hydrant at North Main Street, originally thought to be connected on North Main Street. Overruns and removal of unsuitable clay trench materials, expansion of trench patching due to poor roadway conditions, and cost overruns for police details covering all aspects of construction. Note that there are sufficient grant funds available to cover these cost overruns. So, it's not gonna come out of our general budget, so. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order for the Mount Pleasant Street project for $26,572.06.
So moved.
And I'll second, any discussion?
I was just gonna say, this is a significant change order with time of completion, they've already pushed it back a couple of times, and I remember we discussed if that would increase the cost of police details, that wouldn't affect us, but. If it's gonna be covered by the grant, I guess, it's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and last, I suppose, but not least, Ethan, you wanna talk about what's going on with your help down at the transfer station?
Sure, so, the proposal that I put in to the Board is effectively just an effect for, an ask for additional funds, so what, considering and what you've been doing is combining the transfer station manager position with the Board of Health clerk position. Number one, I wanna say that not, not at all because there's been any issue with anybody working in those positions as they are, and if they have to stay the same, that's, this is no reflection on the, on the people who've been working those positions, but particularly in the office, we've had a significant amount of turnover. The recycling center monitors, aside from the manager, we've had a lot of turnover in those positions as well. And we think that combining those two positions will really help to, number one, produce a sort of more, a job that's more attractive to candidates, potentially be a full-time benefited job, which is, can be extremely attractive, and like streamline the operations in the department so that the clerk has a better knowledge of what's going on in the recycling center and vice versa. Again, everyone who's worked up until now has done a great job moving things around and going back and forth, but there is a fair amount of work that needs to be done by people at the recycling center, the manager down there, bringing deposits and things to the office, and then the office will always know exactly when things are happening and what things are happening at the, at the facility in terms of invoicing and billing and things like that. So, it was our thought that combining these two positions would be more attractive to new candidates, as well as offering a fair amount of efficiency in the office, because to be frank, when we don't have a clerk in the office, I spend a whole lot of time down there, and it's not sustainable for me, it's not sustainable for anybody else on the Board. And we can only, we can only do so much, and we'll be in big trouble if we don't have someone standing in.
Have you, have you spoken to the, have you discussed it with the Finance Committee?
I've not.
And have you discussed it with the, our finance officers in the town hall?
No, I mean, other than the email that I initially, the proposal I initially emailed and we went to you guys as well as Sheila.
I'm not opposed. I certainly think that, based on your argument, it's probably warranted, and I've seen what, you know, the effort that goes on. What I would like, so you've gone over your budget, obviously, you got the money in your budget?
No, so this proposal is asking for a budget increase of approximately $49,260.
And how much of that is, so would you raise the, the price of the stickers, or would you?
This ask is not based on, on any raise, any revenue coming from our department. I'm not saying that can't be done, so we are this year increasing sticker fees, but that's really a response to increased costs down there and sustaining that cost, that
So, it says total annual cost 82,150, but you said the, cause that, that obviously takes into account, into account the two current salaries, correct?
Correct, that would be, so that, no, that, that's the total annual cost for this new combined position. Whereas now, we have a salary for the center manager and a salary for the clerk, which total roughly just under 40,000.
I'd like to give it two more weeks. That way, we can do the numbers with the finance officers and, you know, it's budget season, so obviously, everybody's looking for more money, so with what we just talked about, it makes it kinda difficult. And I know you're in a bind, we're, a lot of the departments are in a bind, so I think we really need to reflect on it a little bit.
Yep.
A little bit more. If you wanna talk to them about the effects on the budget as well, that would go a long way, because I think everybody needs to be on the same page from here on out as far as about budgets go, so.
And I guess also make, sort of make a question, maybe this is more a question to, to, and Finance Committee is, so, I, I understand the need to wait another two weeks for, for you guys to have a think on it. I don't know if I can wait that long because the staff down at the recycling center has already been really busting to get things done down there without.
Yes, they've been doing fantastic work.
And not, you know, officially under this, as a manager position, so I wanna get that worked out as quick as possible, so I guess, I don't know if you can answer this, but my question, I guess, would be, is this, do you, do you think this is gonna be immediately off the table? Cause if it is, I'll be done thinking about it and work towards something else.
Well, I can't speak for the Finance Committee and I can't speak for the people in the office as far as the budget goes, but you said 49,000? That's, that's gonna be a pretty hard sell, so it's gonna be, that's why I wanted the two weeks to be able to really dig in a little more.
Yep. Alright. Well, I'll talk to, I'll talk to staff down at the recycling center and office and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything on that?
No, I agree with that, even if we have to figure out some kind of solution with maybe adjusting the salary slightly, I mean, I agree, the position should probably be combined, it would make it more attractive to be a benefited position, so I'd like to see how we can try to figure that out.
And then, the other consideration too, is if we do end up creating a, a personnel policy for non-union personnel, you know, we'd have to make sure that that fits into all that too, so. Alright, so, two weeks?
Thank you.
Alright, public commentary. You already spoke.
30 seconds.
Go ahead.
Listen, speaking for the Finance Committee, the budget process of the town finances, I encourage you all to really put an emphasis in, on, on the school situation and closing down 7th through 12th grade. Without that, we're in trouble. Without that, I think with, they've been farmed out, whatever, have, whatever we do with them, we'll be able to keep the town above water. There are approximately 40 employees in the school, in the high school.
When, when we appoint committees to different things like conservation, conservation particularly or zoning, wherever, I've always said that the, the idea is for the committee to help people do what they want on their own property within the confines of the law, not to just shut people down, whatever. And I think with elected committees, elected officials, elected boards, it's, it's kinda the same thing, okay? So, we have the water superintendents, we have the sewer superintendents, they're appointed, the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, the Board of Health, all the elected boards. So, we're here to operate our own department for the benefit of the town, okay? So, for instance, the, the water department, we hire a superintendent to run the thing. The water department's gonna make, the water commissioners are gonna make sure that the water department's being run to the best effect on the town. And that goes for the sewer superintendents and commissioners, and it goes for, you know, the Board of Health is running their thing the way they're supposed to, and the school committee's gotta do the same thing. They hire a superintendent to run the school, the school committee, it's their job to make sure that they're running, that that's operating to the best interest of the town, AKA the taxpayer. So, with, you know, that's, that's gotta be the taxpayer, and we've got, you know, a discrepancy here, you know, with the average individual income of $32,000, okay? And, you know, we've got some employees that are making 154,000. So, it's, it's not really, you know, when you, when you ask, you can't ask someone making 32,000 to give more when you're making as much as you're making, you know? So, it's, it's very difficult to sell that when they say, well, they want, they want services, they gotta pay for them. Well, you know, there's, there's gotta be some give somewhere, and it can't be on the guy making or the woman making 32,000. You know, it's just not right. So, public comment period still, who else? So, public concurry, still, who else? Brandon Beadie.
I'm sorry.
Like, not with a stick or anything, but he got his hand up for it.
I'd just like to say, we had our townwide first first night on Plan B. It went very well.
It was fun.
A lot of people, I had a lot of nice things to say about it, I think it went very well, and I'd just like to thank everybody involved, all the hard work and putting it together, and I hope to see another one next year.
Yeah, that'd be nice, hopefully the weather's the same.
We'll work on that.
That was a beautiful day.
Yeah.
So Kathy?
Yes, I have something nice to say. I'm sure you noticed during the month of December that the town was decorated for the Christmas season.
Yes, thank you.
We know we started off a little rocky, but the DOT, we had probably 20, at least 20 volunteers come out.
Wow, that's good.
It was wonderful, there was no drama, we had a fun time, we had even people from the town offices came to help, it was great, and a lot of new faces.
Good.
A lot of new faces volunteered that day. Well, this past Saturday, we took the decorations down. And still, it was snowy, we still had a lot of volunteers, all saying, "We'll be back next year, we promise you we'll be back to help."
Excellent.
Well, there was one young man, well, everyone's a young man, but there was one man that was, that helped, and he and I were talking, knew the town, and something was, he fixed the wooden soldier that got into the town offices, right on the, right by the...
Well, nice.
He was broken, and he fixed it. And I told him how great, what a great job, and how there were a lot of pictures taken of the townhouse at Christmas time, it was very pretty. And he said, "I loved reading what people have to say," and then he said, "I love this town, I'm so glad we moved here."
Nice, that's nice to hear.
Yes, it is, it's nice to hear.
All right, anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Don't be troubled. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.